The furnace came back on today. It's, uh...
I'd like to call the City Council Caucus meeting to order for November 23rd, 2015. We have three public hearings tonight. If the clerk would read each of those?
Public hearing number one regarding electric city vehicle charging stations. Public hearing number two regarding downtown special assessment district 2016 budget. Public hearing number three regarding Upper Union Street bid 2016 budget.
And then for final consideration, item number one.
Item number one, under final consideration, an ordinance allowing two-way traffic on Barrett Street.
Without objection on consent, item number two.
Item number two, for original consideration, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds of Series 2002, 2007, and 2008.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three, an ordinance to reappropriate the 2016 budget.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number four.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing acceptance of police traffic services program grant New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing execution of the lease agreement for Beavis Hill property.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing participation in golf course calendar card by the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course for 2016 season.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the sale of 81 Cheltenham Avenue.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the sale of 730 Kenwood Avenue.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the sale of 521-523 Seneca Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Sura properties for demolition.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution appointing Christopher Mastriani to the Upper Union Street Bid Board of Directors.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing settlement of a claim by Jennifer Costa.
Discussed in Claims Committee without objection on consent, item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Broderick Shea.
Also discussed in Claims without objection on consent, item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax servuary by Star Advisors LLC at 2165 Technology Drive.
Discussed in Claims without objection on consent, item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution recognizing the month of November as epilepsy awareness month.
We'll be taking this one out of order. Ms. Perazzo will present that. Item number 16.
Item number 16, under contract and supply, a resolution to accept the bid and award the contract for demolition and debris removal for select vacant buildings.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution to accept the bid and award the contract for furnishing supplies and equipment for 2015 for the water department.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent, and then remaining items were just discussed in the City Development and Planning Committee meeting this evening at 6:30. So, item number 18.
Item number 18, under original consideration, a resolution supporting New York State DEC grant application.
Without objection on consent, item number 19.
Item number 19, a resolution authorizing the sale of 42 Western Parkway.
Without objection on consent, item number 20.
Item number 20, a resolution authorizing the sale of 2418 Campbell Avenue.
Without objection on consent, item number 21.
Item number 21, a resolution authorizing the sale of 366 Duane Avenue.
Without objection on consent, item number 22.
Item number 22, a resolution authorizing the sale of 303 Duane Avenue.
Without objection on consent, item number 23.
Item number 23, a resolution authorizing sale of 18 Jefferson Street.
Without objection on consent, item number 24.
Item number 24, a resolution authorizing the sale of 463 Manchester Road.
Without objection on consent, item number 25.
Item number 25, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1121 Chrysler Avenue.
Without objection on consent, and item number 26.
Item number 26, a resolution authorizing sale of 603 Seneca Street.
Without objection on consent. There's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
I will now call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, November 23rd, and ask that you rise for the invocation from Reverend Dave Chitram.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Beloved brothers and sisters, with your reverence, faith, and devotion, let us all pray as one family. Pure, holy, divine Lord of Lords, God of Gods, salutations and prostrations unto thee. Gracious Father, we thank you for your priceless gift of life. We thank you for your beautiful world and its infinite resources. We thank you for your glorious and sweet divine presence today. Rested Lord, please bless the Honorable Mayor with the dexterity to lead us all. Please bless the councilors and the rest of this congregation with the wisdom, understanding, and conviction to realize the goals and objectives of this undertaking this evening. O supreme divine, kindly remove the shortcomings, misunderstandings, grievances of each and every resident of this county. Enlighten us so that we can always be conscious of our true realities, the truth to ourselves and others. Inspire us that we can share our false ego and execute our duties diligently. Give us the courage and the strength so that we can overcome our negativities and shine radiantly with our sublime virtues. Father, help us all to create atmospheres of peace, harmony, joy, and blessedness. Sweet Lord, when we deviate from your divine words, forgive us. When we forget you and we fight among ourselves, forgive us. And when we fail to respect all your creation as we should, please forgive us. Adorable Lord, we thank you for all your gifts, love, and blessings. God bless this assembly. God bless this county. God bless the United States of America. Thank you all very much.
All right, I'm going to ask my brother Bob King to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge is to celebrate the United States of America and to rely on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo? Ms. Porterfield? Mr. Ferrari? Mr. Kozier? Mr. Riggi? Mr. Mutiveren?
Present.
Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have one out-of-order resolution for epilepsy awareness month. Ms. Perazzo.
Madam President?
You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing the month of November as epilepsy awareness month, whereas Schenectady County is home to more than 3,000 people who have been diagnosed with epilepsy, a disease which causes unexpected seizures and sometimes death. And whereas epilepsy is the fourth most common neurological condition in the United States with more than 150,000 new diagnoses each year. And whereas with the treatment options such as brain surgery, nerve stimulation, and prescription medication, four out of 10 epileptics still experience uncontrolled seizures. And whereas the Epilepsy Foundation of Northeastern New York has been at the forefront of epilepsy advocacy and treatment for the past 30 years in providing free programs and services to those diagnosed with epilepsy and their families, including more than 3,000 people in Schenectady County alone. And whereas the mission of the organizations such as EFNYs is ultimately to find a cure for epilepsy and to help diagnose epileptics to overcome its challenges through community service, education, advocacy, outreach, and research. Now therefore be resolved, the mayor and the city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the month of November as epilepsy awareness month, and in doing so encourage the citizens of this city to better understand this disorder and promote epilepsy research programs that seek new treatments and a cure. I move this?
All right, seconded by Mr. Mutiveren, all in favor?
Aye. And we have a special guest with us this evening, Britten, and she would like to say a few words.
Good.
My name is Britten Otis, and I am nine years old. I have non-convulsive epilepsy, and I want to tell you a little bit about it. I work very hard at school, and I am very smart, but sometimes I get very confused. Before we figured out that I was having seizures, we thought that I had a learning disability. That was not true. My seizures are like staring spells, where I space out, and it looks like I'm not paying attention. Other people have different kinds of seizures. Seizures can be different every time they happen. My first-grade teacher, Mrs. Spauker, thought there was something more happening, and we talked to my parents. My parents are so grateful for Mrs. Spauker for helping us figure out what was happening. My doctors did a lot of tests. One of the tests was putting wires all over my head to see what my brain was doing inside. The wires are different... the wires were all different colors, and my mom called it rainbow hair. That made me feel better. She told me I looked very fancy with my rainbow hair. I wasn't scared about the test anymore. My parents, doctors, and teachers worked together to help me feel safe and strong. I have special teachers at school who helped me go over my work to make sure that I didn't miss anything, named Mrs. Kirkham and Mrs. Pangy, to help me. They are very important to me. My nurse, Mrs. Stafford, lets my parents know if I had a hard day. My teacher, Mrs. O'Rourke, is really nice. She lets me practice talking about epilepsy with my class. I answered hundreds of questions from my classmates. They are very interested about epilepsy. I'm doing great in fourth grade. I play the French horn, field hockey, lacrosse, and basketball, and I dance at Jenny Martin. I have so many great friends. I also have a really big family that loves me so much. At night, I do meditation to help me relax. When our friend Lisa Perezzo asked if I could talk about epilepsy, I felt so special. I asked my mom if I could get a purple dress. We went out on Saturday and stopped into an antique store for the first time ever. This dress was there. It's purple, it's fancy, and it fits me perfectly. And it was $10. My mom could not say no. By the way, happy birthday, Lisa. The last thing I want to say is that you don't get epilepsy by being friends with someone who has it. So, please be a good friend to everyone. It makes people happy to have friends. Some of my best friends are Michaela, Ava, and Erin, and my brothers Branson and Brayden. They support me a lot. I'm very lucky to have great friends. Thank you, Schenectady.
Thank you. And we also...
I'm Bob Bain with the Epilepsy Foundation of Northeastern New York, and I've been set up before, but this is a real... to follow that is... only my brother-in-law does stuff like that, but I can only say thank you again for taking time out of your evening to recognize epilepsy. I cannot think of a better spokesperson than the one that you just saw, and I'm going to sign her up before she leaves tonight. And, you know, that is epilepsy. That, you know, it affects families, friends, as well as the person who has it. We are very energized. We've been doing this for... the foundation's been around for... next year will be 35 years, providing a lot of services and programs for not only people with epilepsy, but family and friends. And we are very energized every time we go down to DC because we meet the people that are doing much of the epilepsy research. And this year, this past year, when we went down and talked to the doctors and the research people, there are many, many things that are very, very close to maybe not get a panacea for it, but at least to set us in a place where we go down in a year, or five years, or 10 years, we will be able to find a cure. And much of our activities in fundraising during the year, and we have several of them, there's always a piece of whatever we get goes into the national research, and we're trying to take care of the folks here, not only in the city of Schenectady, Schenectady County and Capital Region, but also upstate and the North Country and down in the upper Hudson Valley as well, and 22 counties. But, and we'll continue to do that, but it's a wonderful night, and I'm just... I'm so glad to have met you, and you were right behind me there. And what a wonderful job. And congratulations to your parents as well, because they've done a great job, especially with the $10 thing. That's... I would stick with that if you were... But thank you very much, and thank you for remembering the Epilepsy Foundation in your program tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for the work you do. All right, we have three public hearings. The clerk read those earlier. I have no one signed up to speak on any of them, so I'm going to declare all three public hearings closed. We'll move to the approval of the minutes for November 9th, 2015 meeting. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, November 23rd, 2015. Under official, a letter dated November 23rd, 2015 from Paul LaFond, Director of Water and Wastewater, recommending the award of furnishing supplies and equipment 2015 be awarded to Ferguson Water Works. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
Okay. We'll move on to committee reports. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. For Health and Recreation, I just wanted to update that we had Teresa Zubretzky come from the Tobacco Free Coalition at our committee meeting this past week, and we're looking at doing... looking at possibly putting forth some legislation regarding smoking around municipal buildings and how far away that you have to be. It's something that the Health and Recreation Committee will take the information that she's brought to us and look a little further into it to see about the city putting forth some legislation around that. Also want to mention that there was an article that HUD had put out that they're going to be having no smoking in all of their properties all over the United States. So, this is a trend that we're seeing happening all over the country, and so it's an opportunity for Schenectady to be able to try to bring this legislation forward. So, we'll be bringing more of that forward as we work on that legislation. Additionally, this is... and this is for employees of the city of Schenectady only. The Employee Wellness Program is presenting a 2015-2016 No Gain Maintain Challenge. It says that the average American gains up to eight... from eight to 12 pounds during the holiday season. So, this challenge is that everyone maintains their weight within two pounds of the initial weigh-in. Again, it's only for employees of the city, but families obviously can support them in this effort. I spoke with Tiffany White today from Personnel, and she told me that three times as many people signed up this year, which started this past Friday, as they have in years past. So, there's still an opportunity for employees to sign up. There's a register and weigh-in day. There are two left. There's one tomorrow at the Schenectady Fire Department from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., and then again on Wednesday, November 25th, again at the Fire Department from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. So, people can go register, sign in, weigh in. They'll keep it confidential. Don't worry about that part. And then in January, there'll be a way out as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? No? All right. If not, we'll move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, and I have no one signed up to speak to that, so I'm going to declare that portion of the meeting closed, and I will entertain a motion then to approve the legislative agenda. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
And we will now move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have five people signed up to speak. The first is Anthony Carrata.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, President. For I'd like to speak on what I'm going to speak on tonight, just like to say, as much as the city's getting in bad rap, that as much as you see a local business getting necessarily recognition... of course, I'm talking about Puzzles Bakery. Right after the council recognized them, less than a week later, CBS Network News did a report on Puzzles. Now, what I'd like to talk about is, I know the mayor, the council, and the president of the council would like downtown Schenectady look nice for the holidays. A lot of businesses have already had open houses, so I'm going to have open houses within the next couple of weeks, but there's something that's been creeping around this nation and killing this nation, and I'm surprised and shocked and awed that it's reached into the city. Of course, what I'm talking about is political correctness. Outside of City Hall here in the lamps, on State Street, now I know we just had the parade. That's all well and good. I know y'all want people to go downtown to practice, to eat in restaurants, to shop at State Street and J, but I'm shocked and awed that the mayor and the council would allow a private corporation, Downtown Puma Corp, to go politically correct. Now, what I mean by politically correct is that we have to be careful what we say in our actions and words, because it may offend some people. That's a bunch of crack and baloney. What I mean by out here in the lights of City Hall and State Street is the holiday greetings. Yes, we got downtown Schenectady. That's all well and good. We got a happy holiday greetings. That's political correctness. I, as a follower of our Lord and Savior, Judge Christ, the only true meaning for Christmas and the holidays, there's nothing of the true meaning of Christmas or the words Merry Christmas downtown at all. What is so wrong with the words Merry Christmas? I am shocked and appalled that the mayor, the council, would allow a private corporation, Downtown Puma Corp, to go political correctness. I urge this council and the mayor for next year to... for Downtown Puma Corp to stop going political correctness and put some Merry Christmas. Because a few years ago, if I'm correct, there was Happy Holidays greetings Merry Christmas hanging on the light post. What happened this year? I know give me the crap that you're going into political correctness or into Muslims and all that. Stop being politically correct and start putting something Merry Christmas up. There's nothing wrong with the words Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor. With the budget and everything else, you guys are praising that you've got it under a tax rebate and everything else, but yet no response back of why you were giving the Fair Housing Coordinator nearly a $9,000 pay raise. For the seniors and the disabled that are on Social Security, we got zero COLA increase, zero pay raise for the 2016. This is, you know, this is another reasoning of need to take a look at why this is happening. Also, last week, we got a report back in from Eric Kajuski, and she's saying, "Well, we hired some whole bunch of minorities and so forth." But when you drill down into it, they were all temporary positions. And I'm just looking at that, and I'm saying, "How's that affirmative action? How does that improve the labor force within the city?" It doesn't. I mean, that's not giving any permanent jobs. If you're saying that you wanted to improve the lives of Hamilton Hills, Central State Street, and Mount Pleasant, give them hope. Give them a job. Temporary jobs are not there. And tonight, you had done epilepsy awareness. Congratulations. It is also known as a hidden disability, and there are a lot of job discrimination within people with epilepsy, because a lot of people don't understand it. And also too, as I did like how the mother called it, we used to call it Medusa's Head. When you had a whole bunch of pearls on your head for 24 hours, you looked really purty. And so, I did like to call it Rainbow Head. Yeah, it is, and it's very uncomfortable, and when you get them off your head, you just want to sit there and scratch your head for about 24 hours, because they are just itchy. But bring alive the jobs and so forth. Anyway, have a good, happy holidays and good Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. We got to get this traffic to slow down on the streets. They speed it like a speedway, and more accidents are going to happen. Around the corners, everywhere. Down the large street, not terrace, boulevard, it's got to stop before somebody gets hurt bad. They got to put a stricter rules. Got to do something before something does happen. We got to fix up the sidewalks, the curbs, right around here too, over across the street, up Albany Street, down the large street, boulevard too. So, that's what the whole story is. We got to slow this traffic down, because I'm getting tired of seeing this every day. Somebody's speeding somewhere. For what? If they want to be in such a big hurry, leave the house an hour early. That's what you got to do.
Thank you. Jim Salingo.
Good evening, council members, Mayor McCarthy. I'm Jim Salingo with the Downtown Schenectady Improvement Corporation, and I just wanted to take a few moments to make the council members and the community aware of a few events that are coming up in the next few weeks here in downtown Schenectady. The first is Small Business Saturday. That is taking place this coming Saturday, November 28th. It's taking place all around the country, but our organization for another year is partnering with the Chamber of Schenectady County, Capital Region Chamber, and also the Upper Union Street Business Improvement District on a partnership to promote all of the fantastic small local businesses that we have right here in Schenectady. So, I invite you, if you're free and available, Mayor McCarthy will be there tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock, right downstairs in the City Hall Rotunda. We're doing a press conference to officially announce Small Business Saturday in the city of Schenectady, and we'll be talking a little bit more about this. We have close to 40 businesses that have put together some specials and promotions for the day. So, again, that's coming up this Saturday, November 28th. We encourage you to check out the information we have tomorrow at the press conference, and also, please, to everyone out there in the community, come out and support your local independent businesses this coming Saturday. And the other one I quickly wanted to mention was coming up on Saturday, December 12th, from noon to 4:00 right here at City Hall, is our annual city holiday celebration. This is the DSIC's free holiday event for the community, and we've done it in City Hall for many years, and this, again, is from noon to 4:00 on that Saturday. And this includes everything from free horse and carriage rides around City Hall. We have free photos with Santa Claus down in Room 110 in front of that beautiful fireplace, kids crafts with Schenectady High School junior ROTC students. We've got the puppet people, Mai Sai, Arts with Stockade Station, Dudley Observatory, free hot chocolate and snacks, music and caroling, and we still have things that we're adding to the agenda. So, again, that's on Saturday, December 12th, from noon to 4:00 right here at City Hall. Everything is free, so everybody in the community, come downtown that day and get a great opportunity to celebrate downtown. And while you're at it... And while you're at it, go out for a bite to eat or do a little shopping at downtown businesses as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thanks, Jim. Frank Wicks.
A couple of follow-ups from the last couple of meetings. I had noted we have this kind of playground casino for the rich and famous here, but we, quite a lot of the Carver Community Center is being shut down. And I see this councilwoman, Porterfield and others, are really effectively raising, you know, getting the attention. It looks like they're going to be able to raise the money to either save it or get an alternative, so that's to be commended. We also know that the, no kind of, there's any, there's no ice rink for here in Schenectady. And so a kind of, a council member had cozy air, works with some students on the Saturday, and it looks like they're serious about getting a skating surface over in Woodland Park, probably this winter, and so that's good. What has made me a regular here is that, you know, I'm kind of obliged to be a citizen overseer of the Police Department, and the Police Department does a good job on, it was at the parade the other night, and many policemen there, and they were doing what they should do, and being anonymous, hard work, and so on. The downside is when they make, when they create problems that don't exist. And actually, one thing related to it, we have Safety Commissioner Wayne Bennett. I think he's been good. He's been, there's been fewer problems with the Police Department since he's been here. One reason is the discipline is apparently turned over to, you know, Wayne Bennett rather than within the police union, even though that's being challenged. I hope it stays that way. But the additional kind of oversight we need, and I think the mayor noted he wants a new chief that's going to do data-driven policing, but I think the citizens ought to be part of the data-driven policing. So what the citizens really should have is a list of every police officer in the city on a webpage, so whenever we observe the good behavior, we can, you know, put in the comments on it, and if any non-good behavior, we can also comment. I think that can totally change the, you know, culture of the Police Department, and since no one else, no other city seems to be doing it, it's an area where Schenectady could do some pioneering right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we'll move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Parazo.
It seems like every two weeks when I stand up, I have this laundry list of wonderful things to talk about, and tonight is no exception. Congratulations to all in the parade. It was a great turnout. I hear record numbers. And also, congratulations to the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association for a wonderful dinner. I know everybody worked really hard on it. It was very, very festive and wonderful. The new DoubleTree Hotel had their ribbon cutting last week. Absolutely gorgeous. What an improvement on that property. I mean, it's just amazing. It's really very, very beautiful. So I encourage you all to go, maybe have some lunch or a cocktail at the bar and experience what it looks like. Also, Ring of Hope had an open house, and if you're not familiar with Ring of Hope, it's an after-school recreation program. It offers a safe haven and supportive environment, and they use boxing and physical exercise as an alternative to drug use and gang activity. And it creates a positive support system for young people through physical training, coaching, mentoring, and social support. So if you want to learn more about Ring of Hope, they're always looking for support. It's ringofhopeboxingclub.org. Also, last week, I was able to tour the Foster Building. Very, very exciting. As we all know, it's probably one of the most impressive facades in all of downtown Schenectady, and for many, many years, it laid to rot. So seeing that, and, you know, to really get the full effect, you had to hike all the way up to the sixth floor, and I, to the penthouse, and I can say that it was well, well worth it. So they're actually developing from the top floor down, so they expect very soon to be finished. So there's a lot of work yet to be done, but it really, you know, thank you to Mr. Buell for his investment in the city, because it's really quite a project. Sunday, the Schenectady Green Market held a little press event to let everyone know that the, through the generosity of the vendors at the Green Market, this year alone, they have donated 6,000 pounds of food to the city mission and the regional food bank, which equates to about 5,400 meals of local and nutritious food. And I think that really needs to be marked. It's quite impressive. It's local people helping and giving to local people, and I think that's a wonderful thing. As Jim mentioned, Small Business Saturday, we all need to keep that in mind, not just Saturday, November 28th, but all throughout the year. I go to enough ribbon cuttings and see enough new businesses open in Schenectady that I can say that it's totally possible to get all of your Christmas shopping done with small business. So I encourage you to do that, and even if it's not in Schenectady, although I'd prefer that it was, still, I encourage people to shop local and shop small. And then finally, just happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing came to my attention by a fairly elderly 94-year-old lady. We didn't sound it on the phone, but she lives in Sheridan Village. She's concerned that CVS, I guess, has plans of leaving Sheridan Village, and it's going to leave quite a hole in that place. She's concerned, and also some of her neighbors are concerned, and I'm hoping that maybe the city can reach out, and if they are leaving, there's no way to stop them or to encourage them to stay, maybe we can look to bring another entity as a CVS in there, because they also supply some food stuff, since it's kind of food barons since Price Chopper left there, and they can get their staples there that, you know, short-term. So it isn't just for medicines or anything like that, but there is some concern, and hopefully, maybe the city or Department of Development can reach out and see what we can do to plug that gap there. I also, there was a rumor, I don't know about that, that Trusco may also be leaving, so I hope those things aren't true. Bellevue Preservation Inc. will sponsor the community Christmas tree lightings on Thursday, December 10th. The public is invited to the events beginning at 6:15 p.m. at George Washington Bellevue Veterans Park, at the top of Broadway Hill, to light the tree and place a memorial wreath at the monument. A special invitation to extend it to all veterans. Then immediately following, they are all invited to light the tree at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, 1911 Fairview Ave., followed by a get-together in the parish hall for refreshments. That tree is growing. I think it's about this big now, so it has more than six lights on it, so maybe this year it'll be a little bit bigger. If some of you are aware, and I'm sure you are, Schenectady Belmont Pop Warner, they're moving on, and they're, they need help to continue their quest to the Eastern States Champions. The Junior Midget Squad consists of 28 players and 14 cheerleaders, along with 10 adults, and one, they're one game away from the title right now. They're going to play this coming weekend. So far, their costs have amounted to $8,000, and they will need an additional $4,000 to complete this weekend. Please, if you're able, contribute to this organization that has served the youth of Schenectady since 1960. Most of us aren't familiar with George Rose and Carmen DiPaolo, who give their heart and soul to this worthy program, along with a lot of other volunteers. They do so much good work for the youth of Schenectady. You can't even put that into any kind of dollar amount. They really do take care of our youth and for good things. So if Joe can run that little scroll that I gave him, you can make, you can check out the GoFundMe Schenectady Belmont account and contribute, or send a check payable to Belmont Pop Warner, 183 Drams Road, Schenectady, 12302. That's Belmont Pop Warner, 183 Drams Road, Schenectady, 12302. And the old phrase that I grew up with in the 50s, keeping kids in sports keeps them out of courts, it certainly holds true, and they do a terrific job. I can't say enough about what they do and the people that they handle in that organization. So it's a season of giving right now, and if we can give to this organization to keep them going. I mean, the step from there is Florida, and that'd be real expensive. When I talked to Carmen today, he wasn't sure even if they win this weekend, if they'd be able to make that trip to Florida in a national championship. So whatever we can do for this program, it's well worth it, and it's going to go to a super good cause. And again, to everyone, a blessed and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. As Jim Solango from DSIC mentioned, this weekend is Small Business Saturday. It's also Black Friday Day after Thanksgiving shopping. So there's a group of entrepreneurs, it's not downtown, but there's a group of entrepreneurs that have been putting together Flea Market in the Crosstown Plaza Mall, which is there at White Street and Route 7, and will be having it again this weekend on Black Friday and Small Business Saturday. So folks who want to shop local and with small, small businesses certainly could drop by and find any number of things that would meet their needs for the holidays or just for home. Additionally, I'd like to, it was mentioned about the Miracle on Craig Street. There is going to be a telethon this coming, a week from tomorrow, on December 1st. This was a brainchild of assembling an angel Santa Barbara in his efforts to support the Miracle on Craig Street. And so there'll be a live show of talented acts and surprise people that you wouldn't expect to see. People can watch from home on public access, Channel 16 and 17, and also call in to make donations. So if you want to know more about it, you can just go hashtag Giving Tuesday and find out about the Miracle on Craig Street. It is from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Proctors Theater in Rob Alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Mootivaren.
I would like to just take the opportunity to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and please take a moment to spend some quality time with your family, and also, if you can afford it, please look out for our less fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Want to thank everyone who either attended or participated in the Gazette's 48th Holiday Parade on Saturday. The weather was perfect, a great turnout, one of the largest crowds that I've seen in probably a decade. It was always a good event, and just good things continue to happen downtown. Been mentioned Saturday, Small Business Saturday. It's a great time for people to come out, support the small businesses in our community or throughout the Capital District. We also successfully installed the six new playground equipment in the parks throughout the city. Worked with the partners on Wood Lawn and the community build, where volunteers came out throughout the, really, the city to help put that together. It was just a great process, and I thank the council for their support in putting the money in the budget and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for doing all the coordinating, and it really is making a difference in the quality of recreation that's available in our parks. So thank everyone, and again, want everyone to enjoy their Thanksgiving and have a great holiday season. Thank you, Madam President.
I would just like to echo everyone else's comments about all the good things that have gone on this last couple of weeks. It's really been kind of neat. I wanted to just make an announcement about a special city council meeting. A special meeting of the Schenectady City Council Public Service and Utilities Committee will be held at 5:30 p.m. on Monday, November 24th, 2015, to be followed immediately by a special council meeting to consider accepting the bid and awarding the contract for snow and ice control, plowing, and hauling snow for 2015, 2016, or, yeah, 2015, 2016. And also, wish Ms. Parazo a happy birthday, and wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. And on that note, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Ms. Mootivaren, seconded by Ms. Parazo, all in favor? Aye. Very adjourned. No, it's a witness on Monday.